I'm gonna have to get to the door first.
I have to.
Oh, did you steal mine?
No, I put one in this one in my packet.
There we go. Now Jerry's here, we can begin the meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, November 18th, 7:00 PM. Please join me. Do you pledge all allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't see any announcements in here. Are there any I'm missing?
We have the tree lighting ceremony.
Okay, do you want to announce that?
Well, yeah, did you, oh, I was gonna say, did you get something in the mail, but no, you didn't.
I did not.
Um, let me just.
Not invited.
No, no, I got it because of Girl Scouts, so I'll give it personally. So the tree, let me, um, let me pull it up. Because it came home from the kids' school, too.
As opposed to the dog school?
There is such a thing. There is such a thing.
Yes, let me find it. I believe it's always the first Tuesday of the month. I just want to check the time.
Okay. Any other announcements?
I'll do it during, um.
Sure.
Here we go. Tree lighting ceremony is at 6:30 on December 3rd at the Veterans Memorial Park. And then they will follow up into the fire station for songs, Jubilee, and Santa.
Sounds good. Everybody is officially invited now. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate the Black Summer Charger Marching Band for running, winning their national championship title in, at MetLife Stadium.
Again?
Weekend again. Was it last weekend or the weekend before?
It was, um.
Two weeks ago now?
Ninth.
Yeah.
About a week ago.
Congratulations.
So congratulations Chargers, way to go.
Yep, it was exciting. Very good. Anybody else want to announce anything?
No, I think there was something though, wasn't there, a dinner this week, the 21st at the school?
Thursday there.
Oh, that's right, the, uh.
The Thanksgiving feast.
District One Thanksgiving feast, that's the 13th. No, it's not the 13th.
Twenty first.
The 21st, it's Thursday, I think it's at 5:00.
Five, that's right.
Five o'clock.
5:30 PM.
At the high school. It's $5 per person.
Open at 5:00, dinner at 5:30, so. He just sent out, he's very diligent in sending out emails.
Yep. All right, anything else? We have some correspondence for tonight, excuse me. Uh, the first one being resignation of a part-time officer.
Excuse me, did you want to do the minutes?
Oh, yeah, those two. Good, I'm out of practice tonight. Thank you, Peter. Meeting minutes, we have two, three sets.
Actually, two sets. I don't know why she added the fourth yet.
They hadn't, yeah, there was a new email that they had not come in yet.
Okay, so we're down to two. We have the October 7th and the October 21st. Any?
Yes, I do, um.
On the seventh one?
Um, the seventh one as well, yep.
What is it?
Um, so the first, on the 7th, October 7th meeting minutes. In the announcements, the second bullet point, town residents received an information mailer from the town clerk. Selectmen Allward wanted to know who authorized this to be on Facebook. I asked why a Facebook site was on the flyer, not why it was on Facebook, so that's just a slight, um, typo, I guess. And I believe that was all, oh. And also, the, on the last, on page five, regular meeting ended at 8:15. Was that when we entered executive session? Or actually ended, because I think we had an executive session then, so then we would have ended our meeting after that, even though we didn't do anything after the executive session, we still ended our meeting at.
I do not recall. I guess we'll have to, have her go back and look at the tape.
My handwritten notes from my agenda I can pull up later.
Okay, well, and also I wanted her to look also because I'm not on the roll call, to check if I, did the roll call for myself as well, so if so, add my name, if not, leave as is. Any other comments on the 7th? Okay. Anything on the 21st?
Yes.
We'll take them one at a time, as I was not here on the 21st.
Okay. You want to make a motion for the first one?
Make a motion, we accept with revisions the octo, the minutes from the October 7th, 2019 meeting.
Second? Someone? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, and for the 21st?
So I have a few things. Under Departments/Committees, um, the town clerk, online agenda posting. The second to last sentence in that paragraph, the town clerk cannot do this since if there was a power outage, the agendas need to be available for viewing. This was in response to a question I'd asked on whether they could be put online. It doesn't include the fact that it is legal to put them online, but she has those concerns, so I think it should be clarified on that point. And the last point is on page five again. It doesn't say when our meeting ended, or at least I can't find it.
Ended at 8:15.
8:15, okay.
Yep, that one's 8:15.
Okay.
That's when we like to end meetings, obviously.
Apparently. Okay, so that was it.
So that's it on that one? Okay. Anyone else? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the meetings with revisions for October 21st, 2019.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain as well.
That's right, that was a late night, okay. All right, that's it for minutes, and we'll roll to November 4th for the next meeting. All right, correspondence. Did I skip anything this time? No. Okay, the first one we have, a resignation from a part-time police officer. Christopher Pila is resigning. Request her resignation from the force. I think we all have the short note here. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Christopher Pila.
I think it was effective immediately.
Effective of 10/17/2019.
Make it a second.
Hold a second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your service, Officer Pila. Second resignation is from Elaine Ethier, from the Council on Aging. She has put in a letter of resignation as well, which is dated October 18th. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept Elaine's resignation effective immediately.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you for your service. And then we have a letter from a resident. This one's addressed to Mr. Caruso. If you want to speak to this?
Sure, so I met with and followed up with this letter, Thomas Height, from SD Street, and Paul Donley. They, two, two, two points that Mr. Height was making. One, he was inquiring about whether we could get lights, a light, you know, pole light turned on up at the end of SD Street, which is also an emergency access road for MES. There used to be three lights there, now they're down to none, and it's dark, and they're a little bit concerned about public safety. So, just working with Brian and working with Engrid to figure out what to do, and then come back to you folks with thoughts, if, you know, an action plan there.
Okay, I, can I just interject? I think we need to look at what was in our line item for streetlights at the end of last year that we didn't spend, because we had funded that line item with the expectation of so many lights being turned off. And I believe there was a surplus. I don't remember how much in that line item, but there's probably enough for the police and highway to go back out, to look at areas that may need them turned on. There's a lot of people who want lights turned on, and if we start going one by one letter coming in, we're gonna open Pandora's box, so I think, find out how much money we have. What does that convert to streetlights, and then maybe have police and highway go back out and look at areas of need. That would be my suggestion.
Makes sense.
Before we start getting individual letters from everybody throughout town. Because everyone has a valid point, it is dark.
Right, right.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good.
About 16 hours a day now.
Right.
Yeah. And a second point was where Mr. Height's active in one of the churches in Millville. He's asking about whether the town would waive the building permit fees. Each of the churches get requested annually for building permit review, and he's looking to see if those can be waived, so.
So they get a building permit fee every year?
Well, it's a fee for, you know, inspection, annual inspection, basically, so that's.
That would have to come from the Board of Health, wouldn't it? Isn't that a Board of Health?
Yeah, that's a Board of Health issue?
I don't know, you know, Lincoln sent around a whole bunch of letters to folks, and I think he's coming here later.
We do, we do our end-of-year permits, but I don't think St. John's is on the selectment ones. I think that might be a Board of Health, because they have the kitchen downstairs, so, in the hall. So that isn't, like, we do Victor, um, Class II licenses, we do all of that.
The jewelers, yeah.
Businesses, but we don't, we don't do that.
We don't do churches.
And Board of Health is elected, so that's upon them.
Yep, okay. All right. Good.
All right. Uh, we have a letter from Mr. Joseph Reposa, dated October 28th. Resignation from the Board of Assessors Office. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept with regret resignation from Joseph Reposa for the Board of Assessors.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe, for all your service.
And now that we've done the resignations, can we make sure that each of those gets a letter from?
Okay.
Does that leave our Assessor, Board of Assessors, with how many members?
Two.
One?
Or two, right now, right? Is it Marilyn on till the end of the year?
She, uh, when Joe came on, she.
Oh, okay.
So.
A committee of one.
So the board is a problem.
Uh-huh, yeah.
All right. I was thinking Marilyn was on till the end of the year, when her certification required.
So all you civic-minded people who may be interested in becoming an assessor for the town of Millville, please contact Peter Caruso.
Yep, and it's, what, about two meetings a month?
How do you?
A meeting a month, and, um, you take an online course, you take an open book test.
Yeah, which would have to be done immediately.
Immediately. Because you cannot sign vouchers or pay without vouchers.
We cannot submit the recap without two, um, certified assessors, so. An option is, we could appoint someone else, even from my company, since we don't have an in-town residency issue.
Correct.
Step up for discussion.
Okay. We'll be talking about that.
I think we should have that on the next meeting agenda, because we're getting really close to the end of the year. If we don't have anybody come down and volunteer, we're gonna have to go to option two.
And what is option two, and what are the legalities, and how do we set it up?
Okay. Okay, we got a correspondence here from Mass State Lottery Commission regarding Marty's Liquors and Keno. Peter, do you know what this one is?
So really what they're saying is, they have a Keno-to-go product that.
And if we don't say no, they just go?
That's right, they'll be able to offer it, and so, you know, unless the board objects, they're gonna have that at Marty's Liquors.
Just basically like a mega bucks or something like that?
That's right, it's another way to take a chance.
Their lottery license back? They didn't, when they, when they turned over to Marty's, they got rid of it. They weren't selling lottery tickets, and I heard they were gonna bring it back, so does this mean that they've been licensed?
I don't know that, I don't know that.
I would think the state would send it without it being on file.
Or it's pending, maybe, okay.
Yeah.
People can get it.
But I wouldn't sign it.
There's no signature requested, it's just saying.
No, 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 I'm saying I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign that bet. I'm not sure, but I would think.
So I think the only thing we need to find, is anybody object to this?
I do not.
Does it affect us in any way?
No, if somebody wins, then we get some money, so that's the only way it's gonna affect us, so. So, hopefully somebody wins big, at Marty's, playing Keno.
To go.
And I'm wondering if any of the other establishments will be doing that as well.
Yeah.
It looks like they are. It's going online.
I would think.
Okay. So should we take a vote on this one, or?
Do we need to?
I don't, I don't think we need to, because nobody's objecting to it, so.
If we objected, then it has to.
Okay, so, just on file. Mr. Caruso, you're popular, very popular tonight.
You get a lot of letters.
You do. You got another letter here from Lieutenant Governor Polito.
That's right, so this letter came in just last week, October 25th is the date. "Congratulating the town of Millville on having completed best practices chosen as part of a community compact agreement that was signed back in January of 2016," so it goes back a bit, and so there are obviously folks before my time and others' time involved in this. But it's, what's important to the Baker-Polito, um, leadership, administration is strong partnerships with municipalities. And what they say is the community compacts create clear mutual standards, expectations, and accountability for both state and municipalities, as together we seek to create better government for our citizens. And in particular, she says, "I want to applaud the town of Millville for choosing and finalizing the infrastructure, financial policies, and capital improvement plan best practices. With assistance from two community compact grants, Millville was able to complete these best practices and make improvements in these key areas. The governor and I appreciate Millville participating in the community compact initiative." And she sent it to me. I had nothing to do with it just before my time. But I'll take the credit.
There you go, there you go.
It was, for credit to be credit due, is, it was applied by the Executive Secretary, Helen Coffin. It was applied for and granted, and then Mrs. Callahan came up with it, and she got a second grant to kind of tie into that, and, and therefore that work was, that's how that all transpired, but it goes back.
It goes back, sure.
Two employees back, but it's, it's a good thing for the town.
Yep.
Good, it's always nice to get good news.
Collaboration throughout taking this work.
And keep the state happy, that makes everybody happy.
Mm-hmm, yes. All right, so we have Board of Assessors here tonight. David, would you like to join us? Do we have to read this hearing?
Yes.
You have to open a public hearing.
We have to open the public hearing. Okay.
So you're gonna take a motion for someone to open the public hearing with the wording.
There you go. Would anybody like to make the motion to open the public hearing for the Board of Assessors?
So I'll make a motion to open the, um, public hearing for tax classification for the town of Millville, and in accordance with General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the question of adoption of percentage of the tax, total tax levy to be borne by each class of real property, residential, commercial, industrial, open space, and personal property for the fiscal year 2020. The hearing will be held in the Selectmen Meeting Room, Monday, November 18th, at 7:00 PM. Motion to open.
Would anybody like to second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have one quick question. Was this, uh, put forward in the newspapers and advertised and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. David Manzell, would you like to, uh?
So, good evening. So I'll kind of explain the process a little bit, since we did. What is the classification hearing? So basically, there are four classes of property that we assess. The, uh, the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Basically, the crux of a classification hearing is, uh, the Board of Assessors gives a recommendation on whether we should have a single or split tax rate, and kind of give you our rationale behind it, and then the Board of Selectmen vote at the end of the, closing the public hearing on whether you'd like to keep a single tax rate or go with a split, and what the shift factor should be. So, I'm just gonna go through a few pages of the documentation here, just kind of explaining what we have as far as budget items and, and what the levy is, and, uh, so we'll look to page three of your bracket. So our levy, uh, the levy is, this is basically what we need to appropriate to balance the budget. So this is outside of any other funds that we receive through the state and other items. So for fiscal '20, the levy to be raised is estimated to be $5,166,235. This represents a 2.49% increase over last year's levy of $5,040,656. So really, this is pretty modest. Budget was kept really relatively flat, and we only added the 2.5%. So this, that's, that's a good thing. The levy ceiling is the 2.5% of the full value of the town. So our current aggregate value of all taxable property is $321,283,301. So that means the town cannot exit, uh, levy taxes in excess of $8,032,083. In order to get anywhere near that, you would have to pass an override of close to $3 million, which I don't see happening, and I don't believe we need to. New growth revenues this year. So I did a canvas of the entire town. Had quite a few taxpayers grumbling and calling about yard items that are not, have not been assessed or taxed throughout the town, so this took quite a while, but about $20,000 worth of this, uh, new growth revenues is attributable to that. That being said, growth going forward is gonna be pretty nominal. This, oh, we only had one new home this year. I think we only have maybe one to two slated for next year. So you'll see in a minute how the new growth plays into the levy and how this helps out the town. Levy limits, this is our maximal allowable levy. So we are pretty close to that maximum allowable levy. Actually, there's a typo here, I apologize. That figure right there is incorrect in that line item, but down below you'll see, it's, uh, $5,015,056. So you take that number, and we add in our, um, debt excluded, which is the $151,968, which Peter verified this is the number we have, which is good. So we're at $5,167,24. So that only leaves us excess levy capacity roughly of $788 this year. So we are basically as balanced of a budget as you can get. That's not necessarily a good thing, you want to have excess levy capacity. So this is part of, number one, the growth shrinking, we have very little growth. We're gonna have to look to ways to bring in new construction, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential. Personal property has been the largest growth, uh, number for us in the last few years, historically. This year might pan out pretty decent with personal property. We are having a certification year, this coming fiscal '21. So that means we're gonna have to do a canvas of the entire town as part of that process, and look for, verify the proper, personal property we have, look for new accounts, and make sure we have everything listed. So, I had already told Peter that I think it's gonna be a pretty small number come budgetary time. I would start the budgetary process probably with only about $15,000 of new growth for next year. That's being, kind of conservative. Page four. So this is where we start talking about the classes. Residential is by far our largest class in Millville. $295,200, I mean, $295,280,180. That makes up almost 92% of the town's tax base. That is up another couple percent from last year, ever-shrinking commercial-industrial base. Personal property tweaked up a little bit this year, largely because of local utilities, but that's always kind of a flux. So you'll see the commercial-industrial personal property only makes up that remainder a little over 8%. So, in towns that do have split tax rates, you're gonna see that CIP, the commercial-industrial personal property, to be high twenties, thirties percentage. Not likely that we're gonna be hitting that anytime soon, but. What does all this mean down to levy and valuation, down to the tax rates? So balancing the budget and looking at what the proposed tax rate would be at a single tax rate, because valuations have come up, rough, a little over 3% from last year. Tax rate's gonna come down to $16.08. Tax impacts. Fiscal 2020 average single-family valuation. So there is no average single-family home. This is merely just taking our total valuation of the single-family divided by the number of single families. That's how we come up with this number. So that's $297,600. Based on a 1608 tax rate, you're looking at a $4,785 tax bill for the full fiscal year. So that represents an $8,600 increase in value from last year, and average tax increases only $115 for the fiscal year. These are really modest numbers. I work up and down Central Mass and Berkshires, all the way out to the. This is probably one of the, or the lowest average tax increase, and I believe in Cent, in Central Massachusetts, Millville's got the lowest tax rate. So that is one thing that Millville has definitely got going for it, is if we could pull in some.
Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing remains to be seen.
Pull in some more people to move in here, and we'd be all set. So obviously, based on these numbers, my recommendation is that we keep a single tax rate. I gave you a shift option sheet. So doing some calculations, if we wanted to keep residential, the average single-family tax bill, exactly the same as it was last year, you'll see the highlighted column at the 1.25. We would have to shift a 25% to the, that 8% of the commercial-industrial personal property. So we would have a $15.73 residential rate and a $20.10 commercial rate, which would already hurt our ever-shrinking commercial-industrial base. So I do not recommend that. Questions from any of you?
So I believe, for as long as I can remember, we've only had the one tax rate, residential and commercial. Do you remember, has it ever been different, and that you know of?
Here, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And in some of my communities that are split rate, they've been consciously trying to move away from it. Even big cities, Marlboro, Pittsburgh, they've been shrinking that gap over the last few years. It's very tough once you do the split.
Right, to go back.
To go back.
Right. I would say if the rate was increasing dramatically for residential, then consider it, but it's actually going down in the other professional here, so. actually going down and you have a professional here, so...
What, what falls under the purview of personal property?
So, personal property is basically anything within a business. So, if you had a office, it's as small as if you had a home office, it could be your printer, desk, chair, anything that you use for your business. And as big as larger companies, whether they're manufacturing or whatever, it could be all the equipment.
Front end loader or something like that.
Yeah, exactly, all that kinda stuff. So, Massachusetts is quite generous. If you're a corporation or an LLC, there's a large amount of personal property that they exempt. It's one of the few states that does that. So, personally, I think if the state and towns really wanna start looking towards bringing in some revenues, push legislation to redo the personal property laws, but that's, that's my own personal opinion.
But, our utility property, right?
Yeah, so, big chunk are utility companies, like poles and wires, those we do get to tax, that's all kinda essentially valued from the state and then they kinda report to us. Wireless telecoms, they have to report their antennas and any other equipment, so we tax
Any other questions? Make a vote here?
So, you would have to, before you vote, you would have to close the public hearing and close the vote and somebody would be willing to read that paragraph. And then after the vote, I do have a document which has to get submitted to the state, which is called the LA five document. So, this is basically a breakdown of the same percentages that I just went over with you as far as evaluations per class. Tells you that we only have excess levy capacity of seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents and that you're looking to go with a single tax rate.
Thank you for getting this done early, we appreciate that. Anybody from the audience have questions or...
I just got one if I could. The average value increase, two point nine seven percent, you had mentioned here.
Yep.
Indeed, could you tell me, how does that stack up to some other ones that you're doing business with, other towns you're doing business with?
Which increase you...
This is the average value increase?
Yep.
The home value?
Oh, oh, oh.
So, that means that the houses here in Millville, over the last per annum, haven't de-decreased at the rate of two point nine seven percent, correct?
Yes.
Okay, how are other towns in the neighborhood, do you have some, know some or...
Yeah, it's, it's a little less than some of the other communities that I work in. Further up north, Sterling, West Boylston, those type of communities, you're probably, we're, we're closer to, on the high end, nine percent.
I guess as a point, it seems to me that the two point nine seven, as I understand it when I see other towns, is relatively...
It's modest.
Small, relative to what it is in other neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Correct?
It is.
Okay, I thought so. The other ones are foremost, in some cases, two or three times that.
It could be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion to close the public hearing? It's moved. Looking for a second?
Second.
And... Would anybody like to...
We have to close it first.
Well, any other questions? I am off tonight, sorry guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Put an aye on me. Okay. All right, now we need somebody to read the paragraph here.
The Millville Board of Selectmen votes in accordance with Mass General law, chapter forty, section fifty-six is amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real in personal property relative to the setting of the fiscal year twenty twenty tax rates, and set the residential factor at one point zero zero with a corresponding CIP shift of one point zero zero pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Is that the right one?
That is correct.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's round for... Yes, I'll do, it'd be great.
Signature's on those lines, Nick?
Yep. Department of Revenue is very big on making sure I've got the signature. So, yes, going back to the assessors since we haven't met, we're signing, we are gonna have to figure out if possible during next meeting, probably schedule a meeting for somebody to be on the Board of Assessors so that we can continue the recap process and get the tax rate set and tax bills out of the town.
Coordinate with Peter, how many for the house, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, I, I was thankful that Joe, you know, I met him at the annual town meeting and suggested he sign up for the assessors and willingly did that and I think he enjoyed it, but, you know, it's personal reasons why he's not doing enough, the work of doing, being an assessor. And I think he really enjoyed working with Dave as well. So, I think it's a good gig if somebody's up for the task, you learn a lot. It is one of the key four legs of the financial stool of a, you know, a town like this and so it's important.
This is.
You learn a lot from that guy and add a lot of value, so I hope somebody is willing to step up internally and we don't have to go to Plan B.
Exactly, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, thank you.
Well done.
All right, onto public forum, anyone? No?
I could, if I may.
Yes, you may, come on up if you can.
I can.
Lincoln will push you in the chair.
Two things, one is, I wanted to give the early indication, as you know, October first is the head count for BVT, or for any school for that matter, as to what the head count is for the following year. So, right now, I can tell you, and this is totally unofficial, but it appears as if we've got five kids less.
Down to eight?
Yes.
We had thirteen last year.
Yes.
So, you have some graduating and then...
Yeah, you get that bubble where you get, you know, fifteen and they graduate and you don't, but the, the point is, we're bringing in is mainly on the freshman side, it's just you've gotta work through the different bubbles. But, from a budgeting standpoint, Peter, I need you to understand that it's not linear, make, make sure everybody understands that. It's not a linear equation on this. It is something that I think would be beneficial to the town in terms of a cost that would not go up, I wouldn't think, unless the state does some crazy stuff. But indeed, you can probably take a look at around the same number if you need a placeholder for something pretty quickly. Then you say, well, you know, the school piece is X, here's a piece, stick it in. If you've got five kids less, you're stuck in the same number, you should be okay, I think. Okay, and then hopefully I'll come back with more defined, we're in our third session of, of the budget, so we would, we'd be able to give you a better indication as we start to move that thing forward.
Okay, when you say five, you're talking Blackstone, Millville as a whole, or five just Millville? What do you, what do you...
No, no, that'd be just Millville.
Just Millville, okay.
Can I ask why there's such a decrease?
Why there's such a decrease? I'd like to tell you that it would be for a specific reason, but I can't. I would like to say that there were in past years, as you know, how can I say this delicately, a limited opportunity for the kids to be able to, from the eighth grade, to be able to get an opportunity to go see BVT. That was, that was the previous administration, which reflects on what we're looking at now. I don't think that's the case now, I'm pretty happy as a matter of fact, and the association between the new administration up there and what indeed the opportunities for the youngsters going up there. I'll have statistics for you on that once, like, we get that all together. But, I think previous to that, I think it wasn't as robust as it is now and it's reflective in the numbers. Pretty simple, if the kids don't have an opportunity to go there, then they're not gonna go there.
Yeah, they were there last week.
Right, exactly. So, there is, there's better opportunities given this administration than was previously. And that has an effect on the numbers over time, okay? But I think it's some good news for at least they have a placeholder, so at least you know where you're gonna be at. I will also be sending to the chairman, who I hope spreads the good news on some things, been a number of different venues that have opened up. I think I've given you or sent some emails to you on some of them. We've got more news that has come up, I'll be sending that to you as well, in terms of some opportunities for grants and some things that I think will help to keep our school moving forward and way ahead of all the other vocational texts and hopefully give people a good opportunity to go there. The second issue I had was, I was curious as to whether, and I've heard, I guess, more rumors than I have in fact, what is happening with the, with the regional agreement? I mean, has there been any, or is anything that we can at least let people know where at? I've heard different stories from north by northeast to south by southwest, and I don't really know what is happening. So, I'd like to see, I know that you had a gentleman over here who would be the expert on it, so I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are in negotiation, final preparations of the contract. The contract has been sent out to the town boards and, of both member towns, and that I was not at the last joint meeting, I don't know if anybody else was.
Yes, I was at the meeting.
Okay.
Jerry was as well?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what happened there, but as far as I know, the agreement is clo- close to being ratified.
Okay, so, I would say, I wouldn't say it's close at this point in time, only because there were so many things that came up at that last meeting, lots of questions, lots of objections, lots of requests to change things. So, you'll probably hear at the next meeting you go to, there's probably gonna be a lot of red line items that need to be talked through.
I believe it was recorded by the regional, 'cause I, I had to leave, but I watched the remaining part of it. That I had missed, so you could probably go on to the YouTube website for the high school and they have Blackstone, Millville, Selectmen, FinCom, and the administration and school committee all together going over it.
Yeah, so it might be a good, good thing to watch before you go to the next meeting, which I don't, I think it's, is that this Thursday?
It's Thursday, yeah.
This Thursday, there's a lot of meetings this weekend, this Thursday.
So, just my take of that joint meeting, which was, you know, it was a big crowd and it's hard to have people get to consensus with a big crowd, as you can well imagine, particularly from different towns.
And it was a time crunch, there was a lot of stuff to go over.
It was a long meeting, a lot to go over, but, so I guess the way I look at this, what, you know, what are they really trying to do with this regional agreement? I applaud it, I said, I applaud you for, you know, the group, for what they're trying to do. I mean, you know, lived in Sherburne for many years, Dover Sherburne, working off of a sixty-plus year old agreement forever without any change, and trying to change it would be like, as I said at the meeting, striking the third rail, so it's good that they're doing. I think, I see sort of four or five things that they're doing here, Jerry. One, they're in essence trying to memorialize actual practice, because the existing agreements do not reflect what they've got going right there, right now. So, that's one thing, they're straightening that out, you know, they have, the, the existing agreement, which the ones I have aren't even executed, frankly, don't consider the K to five kids as part of the region, so, you know, so there's that. One of the things they had in there, the change they're trying to get is timing of when newly elected school committee members assume their duties. And that is actually, you know, I thought that was pretty good, I think our friends in Blackstone weren't too thrilled about that, but from my perspective, that validated the article that didn't pass, but at least, you know, we put forth of changing dates of the elections of non-school committee folks, be- because that's one of the primary reasons is people can't jump in and hit the ground running right before the, the bulk of the budget season and so forth, so that's one of the things they're trying to...
Did the Blackstone people not, they...
They're not, they're not...
Why aren't they thrilled, their timing is that much different?
So, I think that they're, you know, they're really lo-, they're more locked into their bylaws and I think charter, basically, and that, you know, that, that, they're thinking that the, the change of the duty, they're not suggesting changing the election date, it's changing the assumption of duty, so that, you know, somebody's elected April second, let's say, but they don't actually step into the role until July first, is what the agreement draft currently has. And that was challenging for some, one or more folks from Blackstone to, to appreciate, I guess, the, the way I would say that. So, more to follow on that. I think the other thing they're trying to do is establish, you know, governance of the region and how you best use the educational, you know, facilities and, and so forth. So, it's governance by the school leadership, they're really trying to get that stronger. Whether that's good or bad, I leave to others to figure out.
Governance is by what...
In terms of how they manage, where they...
Yeah, but then how, what is it right now? It's, it's by, by, by the statute of what the agreement is now and it says what? That the people from Millville decide on Millville and the people from Blackstone decide on Blackstone?
Well, you know, that, in fact, you know, the two towns have their elementary schools and that's where their children go. Part of their leadership thing is to change that so that they can move folks around after a, a pretty extensive process as defined in the current draft.
So, it's an elementary migration?
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, you know, I say...
That would be part of it, that would be part of it. I think the bigger, bigger issue is the, the line item of having a building, a school building in each town.
Right.
At the elementary level.
It didn't, I don't think it specifically said elementary level.
Just a, just a school, yeah.
Yeah, but the district owns the middle and high school, so it's, it's, it's the elementary.
Right.
'Cause they own those two other buildings. Yeah, so they really want the, the ability through a process, which I like the process it had, was a certain vote, it was certain, you know, it wasn't just a vote of school committee, there was a whole thing. But it is essentially to create grade level schools versus neighborhood or town schools.
Right, which could be more efficient.
Educationally, it's the best thing.
Right, and looking at our numbers, it makes sense.
It does.
So, right now.
Yeah, so part of that, though, in terms of having the school, they regionalized the control, but the town still had, having the buildings has the capital costs associated with that building. They're not regionalized, so that's, you know, a point still worth, you know, I, I recommend thinking long and hard about. The, the fundamental thing, though, at the end of the day, that in terms of what is the problem they're really trying to solve, and I, I didn't hear much about that, and I think that merits further thought of leaders, is they've got excess capacity, what do you do with it? And it's fairly significant excess capacity amongst all the schools. That's, that's my take of things, and so I think, you know, that's the real issue that I don't hear discussed yet.
So, you're saying that there's actually more space available?
In all buildings.
When you take all the buildings and put them together, there's actually more space available than there is students to be able to fill the seats.
Correct, yes.
And is that, I think I had given you last time we met, last year, I gave you what the prognosis is for the next ten years of what the...
Enrollments are gonna be?
Enrollment's gonna be? Anybody get that?
That isn't going up yet, I don't know.
Not when we're building one house a year in Millville.
So, I, I mean, whatever you're looking at today and saying, holy smokes, I got, I'll make it up, twenty percent capacity I'm not using, I don't think it's gonna all of a sudden miraculously get better. I think indeed what you're gonna find is that that's gonna get worse over time.
Yeah, so you could argue of all the buildings, you might have, you, you probably don't need one of them. I mean, I'm simplifying, but you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know that.
We understand, you know, the way things work, if there's not enough budgets to be made, you don't make budgets.
That's right, that's right.
And I think, Jerry, that the problem in, you know, the perceived problem is that the thought is that Millville's numbers are always lower, class sizes, which isn't an accurate statement based upon past information, but the problem within Millville is that we have two multi-grade levels. So, we have a four or five combined and a three, four. And a three, four combined. So, you know, as a teacher, you're teaching to all levels anyways, but that can be problematic for curriculum, making sure that it's delivered in a timely manner in accordance with MCAS and all those fun things.
But by the time those classes roll over to the next year, you can have that clarified with the plan, because it's not gonna happen instantly, so...
Listen, teachers can make anything happen.
But I mean, as far as if there's a change, we have enough notice to make sure that those kids are in the right curriculum for the next year.
For the next year, yes, that's why, and there's a January first date, I think, for notifying if there's a change in, in location for students. So, but that's the problem that, that is currently in Millville, is the multi-grade classrooms.
Do you see capital costs as being a problem?
For the build, our building?
The district could be rearranged?
There's a possibility that we could, well, if the trend continues the way it is, it would, could be a possibility that it is a problem, but, you know, that's what we're trying to figure out at the moment, basically. I mean, it could be, basically, I mean, the town owns the, the elementary school, so whatever, it doesn't really affect the agreement in this case, that if the agreement stays the way it is, where we own the building and we're guaranteed to have a building, it's not really... and we're guaranteed to have a building, it's not really the responsibility in the agreement.
But at the last meeting, that was a big sticking point, that sentence.
I would think that'd be something that'd be a blunt, I mean, be the big bump in the road here.
My, my exact quote, I think I said, was that's a very expensive sentence to have in that agreement.
And this town better realize that, that this is a big expense. You better realize that's where the.
And this town needs buildings, buildings for other uses. We don't have a town hall. And I understand once you use an MSBA loan, it has to say a school for a certain period of time, but this is long-term planning we need to do.
And the other thing was that mu- other members of, from Millville were also pretty adamant on having that, that we own the building and that there's guaranteed that it's in the agreement.
I think we took a vote just to, just to see how we all felt that night, and I think most people voted they would take that line item out. Do you recall? It was a majority, cause we just said, well, what, what do we think? How do we think our, our, we don't know how our towns are vote. Us sitting around the table, there were probably twenty-five, thirty of us, and we said, well, how would we vote? We just kind of raised our hands and a majority of us said we'd take that sentence out.
And that sentence said what?
That you have to have a school building in each town.
Oh, okay.
So.
What would be the, just out of curiosity, what would be the rationale for that to be embedded in that? Seems a lot of other towns have done the same thing, cause I've seen other um similar ones. They all wanna put it in Money Jones, why?
I think it was, as it was said at the meeting, it was a security blanket for each town to kind of know that they had their school.
Yeah.
That they're.
Because the pushback at the last time there was a regional agreement trying to happen, pushback was people didn't want their kindergarteners on the bus a long period of time.
Correct. Correct. That's what I was making.
Right. So I think that's, I think that was the premise of this.
More in-home policy they look for in that case.
I believe so. I believe so.
Well, one town supporting a majority of the students and the um infrastructure needs and wear and care versus another town maybe, maybe having a portion of their school being rented out to an educational facility or a BICO or a, you know, a collaborative, um, thank you. Or even maybe a, a college, you know what I mean, for space or something of that sort, so.
Yeah.
So I think that's what it was for, to say your kid will go to your neighborhood school at some point in their career. That's what it felt like to me. That's my impression I got from the conversation that happened around the table.
Yeah, I would agree with that statement.
Madam Chairman, I, I appreciate the comments on it. I didn't mean to get this going, but I mean, I've heard it. There's been a lot of talk around the water bubble around town, and so what is going on here?
Yeah.
And I just said I need to go and ask the people who know what's going on to try to see what is going on, as opposed to listening to eleven different opinions and not know what's going on. So I just hope this straightens it out for some folks that have misdirections as to what has actually been taking place. And I thank you, Andrew, for, for you coming up and going to the meetings to keep us informed.
Yeah, so the meeting was last?
Twelfth.
Twelfth, and it is posted somewhere out on the internet for anybody that wants to watch. And, and I think the meeting wasn't complete, though. We just had so much to talk about, so I foresee us having another roundtable, if you will, because we do get, it was very productive, having all the, both boards here, both finance committees, the school committee, you know, to get the questions out there, cause not all of us think the same way, so.
Right, 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 okay.
I definitely would think we're gonna have another meeting in the short term.
Yeah, they had, uh, they did, they had a short circuit, that they were gonna talk about their budgeting process, and I was, I had some visual aids for that.
Yeah, yeah. Peter didn't get to, you know, put up his PowerPoint, but next time, next time.
Save those. And I think they're looking at a May meeting, annual, to have it proposed. And they did say the document was an all or nothing, whether they changed that, that they'll submit it and it's.
I feel like they probably got more feedback than they were expecting. I'm just making an assumption.
Yeah, but at the beginning of the meeting, they said it was all or nothing. You accept the document with all the revisions or some of it's just cleaning it up, because you have nineteen sixty, well nineteen seventy document that has eighty-two elementary schools and what, ninety-something middle school information in there, so they're trying to have it reflective, like just for ease and organization and wordage. So those, I think, are, those are the easy fixes.
They've done a lot of work.
Cause that doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
But then they have these other pieces.
Yeah, the committee's done a lot of work. They put in a lot of time, you can tell. Yeah.
Might be more of a conversation, but hopefully they change that statement of a all or nothing, cause I'd like to see it cleaned up.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I've been hearing so many rumors, I, I gotta find out.
The great minds think.
Thanks for asking. So the next rec meeting's when? Thursday night?
This Thursday, yeah, after the dinner, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, I won't be there. I have to be at capital planning that night, so. All right, anything else? All right, onto new business.
All right, so you have a, you have to approve the election warrant and sign it. And so you'll have the signatures at the end, or you can do them now. There's seven copies that need to be signed.
Okay.
That's the question that is gonna go on the ballot that's been vetted and drafted by council. So if you wanna just sign them as of today.
Okay, yeah.
There's seven copies, and then those will be posted just like a regular warrant, a ballot warrant.
So Peter, I know at the finance committee he, um, hearing that we were at, question came about of, why isn't there a dollar amount on this? And we said, you know, we had brought it.
Council, that's, yeah, and I've normally not seen the dollar amount.
Right, so I, I just think some people are going to ask, what am I signing up for, and why isn't the dollar amount on there? So those are just questions that we're gonna wanna be prepared to answer.
Yeah, I mean, I can't give you a succinct answer, quite frankly. I've never seen the dollar amount on a capital item like this uh in a ballot. And the dollars are discussed at the, when you're discussing the item and voting.
Right, and I know it's discussed at town meeting, whatever, I just, for people that were not able to be there.
Perhaps a flyer could be handed out on facts of.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I don't know what level of.
I don't think that'd become formal.
Marketing, the school administration and leadership are likely to do, but I would presume that they wanna do something between now and December fourth when this.
There was a successful vote at the town meeting, so I assume it'll be a successful at the ballot, hopefully, because it's a big, important project that.
Yeah, and there's only some, I mean, you can put the cost of the project, you can put some information out, but you can't do much more than that, as far as um two and a half overrides there, even though it's a debt exclusion. And I'm wondering if the actual dollar amount was there, that came in under, but you're now paying.
That's right.
You're now tied into.
Right, spending that.
So it's.
Right. And I know that we, we definitely brought this up to legal and, and our council, okay.
So it's for the actual price of the bond, and then if it comes in under, they don't have um, what are the, they, they build in those extra amounts for the contingencies. If you don't hit any contingencies, your, your price tag is gonna be lower and you won't have to be, you don't have the bond on there.
Yeah, they have to go out the bid and all that, so whatever the final numbers, you have to be determined. But so in this situation, at this point on this agenda is for you to approve the warrant and then get it signed by everybody.
All right. Any questions on the warrant? No. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve and sign the warrant as presented.
Make them for a second.
Second.
Which one do you want a second? Andrew? I'll put Andrew's name. Oh, uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you. We'll sign that with the, at the end with the meeting minutes. Okay.
Okay, so the next item is just a, a packet that I would sign as the authorizing signature over here. But just letting you know, the Mass Cultural Council um is, provided an agreement that I'll execute, allocating fifty-two hundred dollars uh to the local Millville Cultural Council, um, cover their cultural council account. It goes right into their account, I think, for various purposes that they've deemed. And this is the agreement, just letting you know, and I'll, I'll be signing it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Give me an update. Next item, a gentleman showed up the other day last week donating this um hand, uh, print, ink and brush, it's a print of ink and brush that he did. He's a, his name is Roland Gravel. He's a Millville resident. He made the drawing and painting from this photograph that he had taken.
That's beautiful.
It's on the Taft Blacksmith Shop that was on the corner of Old Chestnut Hill Road and Fisher Street, Millville. Um, the photo was taken from the evit, original photo that he done.
There's actually a little plaque there on the corner.
Donating it, yeah, and the information of him on the back, so he's just donated this, and I thought it'd be nice for you to.
That's beautiful. That's nice.
Accept the gift.
Now I know what it looked like a long time ago.
Yeah, so, um.
And rumor has it, right?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Rumor has it is the poem from Henry Wordsworth Longfellow. The Blacksmith is about that location.
No kidding.
So, and if you Google, if you Google that information, it will come up. Um, and even on his, his, um, the library that's named after him, they mention, they mention that apart in the, so might be nice to be paired with that poem, and that hence why we have our Longfellow School was named after that, so. Yes.
Yeah, they, they have a really, it's a small plaque like right on the corner.
And a little rock.
You know, I have, when we first moved here, I had a pen, it's like, what is that? Oh my God, no idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gravel.
Thank you, Mr. Gravel.
Yeah, it's very nice.
We sent him.
Really nice gentleman. I invited him to be here. He didn't want to be here, but.
Yeah.
Very, very nice man.
Really enjoyed his company.
And talented.
Yes.
He's very talented, yeah.
Thank you.
He grew up with his children.
Yeah, okay.
Can we send him a thank you as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
And if you'd like our signatures on that, we can do that too, I would think, right?
Sure, why not?
Sure, okay.
That's a special gift that we should owe.
I agree. Nice gesture. All right, old business. Is this falling under old business or town administrator report?
No, that's town administrator report. I just wanna just sort of talk briefly about that.
All right, I don't have any old business on here that we need to discuss. Anybody else have? All right, selectmen's reports. Anybody have any?
I do not have anything.
Nor do I.
Thursday night, capital planning committee meeting, rec meeting. I know it's big, big choices, you know? Choose which one you wanna go to.
All the Girl Scouts.
All the, all Girl Scouts.
Be in my, my district.
Yeah, just throwing it out there. We have a lot going on in town right now.
Yeah, there's a finance committee meeting Wednesday night. They put me on their agenda, and I said, can you make it? So that would be the third night this week.
I'm gonna have to park my camper out here for you.
Something else going on, but I'm trying to see if I can get there, so.
I might be able to rent your room.
You like dog?
I love getting home at eleven o'clock.
I hope you're coming in later.
No, that's so far.
Yes, sir.
May the capital planning, uh, going to be filmed or?
I believe it will be, yes.
It will be?
I believe so. Well, I shouldn't say, well, there's so many meetings going on, we'd have to ask Tim which one he's going, if he can cover them all. We have requested that they get um filmed, but with multiple meetings going on, he sometimes has to make a choice, but.
I've got a meeting at BVT with the Association that night.
Okay, I'll find out and let you know.
If you would.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, anybody else selectmen's forum? All right, Peter, back to you.
Just so, uh, we had covered it uh before the special town meeting, briefly, the, the audit. And we had signed the agreement, the engagement letter. Uh, you authorized me to sign that engagement letter. And just because there seems to be some misinformation out there, you know, we're, we've got two things going on. We have a, an audit by the CPA, same CPA that audits BMR, okay? They're coming in when we close the books, we're gonna do the audit, and that's what we're using our budgeted money for to do the audit. Separately, we have an, uh, earmark grant that we've received from the state for an internal audit, internal audit purposes, for which I submitted a letter. They asked me to submit a letter, how would you use the money? Before they let us have the money, basically, okay? And so I did that. I used to be an auditor way back when, before there was electricity. I used to do that stuff.
Green bar's your friend.
You know, it included, that's right, and it included, you know, City of Boston, you know, Massport, um, you know, Boston Redevelopment Authority, so.
So you ticked and tacked once before.
And I went to my favorite client, Puma, so um, in any event, uh, so I was able to craft up how we would use the earmark thirty thousand dollars, and it provides flexibility, but part of what it is, is to dig into a lot of, you know, prepare for the audit, but also dig into things so that we see, what, you know, I see stuff, I look at things differently than others might have before me. So I say, what's going on here? And we dig in and we learn, so that's part of how we're able to spend some of the earmark dollars, and I've outlined that. So we're researching, reconciling, and adjusting is necessary, and I've estimated a budget amount, but I qualified that. We're gonna document Millville-specific accounting cycles. We're gonna prepare audit schedules in support of the external audit. We're gonna do special projects for me, a former CPA, and I've outlined a couple of those. And I say, we may decide to go more deeply into something or more broadly, depending on how it sniffs or, sniffs out. And things have to pass the sniff test. That's what I learned when I was an auditor. If it doesn't smell right, you'd, you'd, you'd really get into it, so that's what we're doing here. And so there are two differences, you know, we're not, the state doesn't come in and perform an audit, a CPA firm comes in and perform an audit. And the firm that's coming in is the one that's used to do our audits for us, so they have familiarity with Millville and its past transactions. Their actual audit will be for the period ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, okay? And to get there, they have to get to a beginning point that they're happy with, and so that you get a full year. They don't, and they qualify, they say, we don't do anything after that period of time, so they're not responsible for something that might be happening right now. They, unless they see something or learn of something, of course, they, they're obligated. But they also, as independent CPAs, having been one, um, you know, there are standards by which they operate. And so they're, you know, pretty high-standard people. They're not people, even though we've worked with them before, they're not people that um don't do what's, they, they always do the right thing, I guess. I have a high regard for CPAs, so I just haven't said. So there's my update on that.
Nobody's gonna put their license on the line for anyone.
No, that's correct.
From my experiences.
I, I didn't have on the list of the agenda, but I was gonna, but I wrote it in, regional update, regional rec committee meeting.
Still in his thunder.
You allowed me to, I was gonna cover it anyway, but you know, great minds think alike. I also added snow plowing plan, just to let you all know, you know, Brian O'Alley's done a great job of setting the town up for making sure the streets are safe, clear, and so forth during this winter. It's a different procedure than what was done in previous years, where he engaged one basic vendor or contractor who then managed subcontractors as well as their own equipment. That contractor, that one contractor, is unable to work for us these days, okay? So he's gone out and you, folks might have seen the sign saying, please come to town hall, pick up a contract. It's an extensive contract, and uh, it, it requires inspections by Brian of their, their equipment and so forth, and they have to have levels of insurance, and so looks like we have very good coverage, not with the biggest piece of equipment, but big enough for what we, our needs are. It just means they'll go out and come back when they're sanding more frequently than a big rig carrying a lot of sand. So anyway, uh, that's well in hand. Brian's done a wonderful job. He was losing sleep, I would say, until he finally got folks, you know, lined up under this system, and now he's sleeping better.
Oh, good, good.
If he's sleeping better, I'm sleeping better. So that's all I really had to say.
Set up, yours? All right, so we'll do signatures.
Are we using Brad at all for any, Nelce recycling? Are we using them for any component? Like the bigger trucks or the?
The pro, no, there's a backstory to it, so it's more complicated.
Okay.
So no, he's, we're not using their big stuff.
Okay. So I'm gonna move, um, items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours up above signatures, cause I think it's past Lincoln's bedtime. He wants to go home. So if you wanna come up.
I will say, this was probably the first time in years when I came down here and actually got to have dinner before the meeting.
Oh, tease us all, tease us all.
So, this is a very long story. I will try and keep it short.
I'll hand out copies of what you're talking about.
I don't think anybody's really.
No, no, there's nothing in advance.
Well, I didn't really expect it to go to a selectmen's meeting, but we're here, so. I've, I've handed out a lot of these this year. This is one I handed out today and will get torn down. We have a, a house here in Millville, an address that uh somebody bought speculating and without any permits turned it into a three-family house.
Didn't they apply somewhere for that?
Excuse me?
Did they go to bought a house or something? No?
Let me tell us.
I know I read this somewhere.
So I found out about it, I issued a stop work order. I will say right now that the property owner, since that day, has been extremely cooperative, but he bit off a lot more than he can chew. And when you take a building and turn it into a three-unit building, I'm skipping over a lot of stuff here, you're required to put sprinklers in. Because he converted a single-family home into three units without permits, um, he has learned a lot of expensive lessons, but again, he's cooper- he has learned a lot of expensive lessons, but again, he's cooperated along the way. And at this point, he's struggling with trying to get a permit to put sprinklers in the building. And there is a third floor to this building that is plastered, it's not heated at this point, but based on the history of Millville and the history of this address in the last year, I'm inclined to think of it as living space. If you go to four living units in a building, a lot of the internal systems change, the permitting process is different, the sprinkler system is different. So, at this point, he's invested in a septic system to support the three units he has. I spoke with my state inspector and a couple other people, and the suggestion was to draw up an agreement which will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Perpetuity, which basically restricts this property, eleven Prospect Street, in three aspects. One, it will never have more, unless this is renegotiated and he goes through a whole other, or a buyer, a new permitting process, never more than three living units, never more than five bedrooms, and the third floor will never be accessible to any of the tenants or be converted to living space. The only way we get, have any leverage is to have a legal document and have it recorded at the Registry of Deeds. It also gives the town, there's a lot of legalese, I wrote one paragraph and sent it off to town council, and said, I need something that's gonna work, and he came back with six pages, and it's fairly extensive. The one other issue in there is that the town, through the building department, has the right to access the property on twenty-four hours' notice to inspect, to make sure that that non-usage is being adhered to.
Not used.
So, he drew that up, and it's evidently required by the senior official in the town to, to sign it, and it has to be done by a notary, and he has to sign it and be witnessed by a notary.
Yeah, he brought it, just before the meeting started.
So I called him, and evidently he showed up with that this afternoon.
Nice fellow.
And, you know, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. To me, it was kind of a perfunctory, this is the only solution to the problem. Because mainly, you know, the guy's been good, but he did this whole thing without any permits at all, and I don't, sorry at this point.
All right, so he's going to have it be only a two-family now?
No, a three.
A three, just on two floors?
Three on two floors, no access to the third floor.
There's a, there's a full walk-up stairway, there's a doorway, but he's, he's blocked some of the hallway, you know, he's said, I'm not interested, I, believe me, I made his life pretty unpleasant for the last six months. And he's spent a lot of money. So that's what this is all about. Hopefully, it's the town taking a, you know, proactive step to cover its buttons, to think about it afterward.
He's up to date on all his fines and such, paying all the fines?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, he still doesn't have a building permit. 'Cause in order to get the building permit, he had to go to the planning board and get a special permit to convert that property to three families. It's allowed in that district, but only by special permit. He didn't have that before he started, I can't issue a permit till he has that. Then he has to, you know, get a plumbing permit, wiring permit, those have been done, and, and he has to have sprinklers in the building, and once he's, gets that, then I'll issue a building. And the work is essentially done at this point, it was almost done when I found out about it.
So are we recording this after all the building permits have been done, finalized? Are we recording that, this, that the registered deeds then?
No, that's going to be recorded before a sprinkler permit is issued.
Okay.
'Cause that's the only way he gets the right to put in the sprinkler system that he's asking to put in, which has been reviewed by the state fire marshal. And once the sprinkler permit is issued, then I will finally issue the building permit. And at that point, to answer your question, he's gonna pay a little fine.
Okay, I'll sign this, this week then.
And I, I would think town council, if you have any questions, is really the place to direct them. He had a couple in regards to wording and the use of the word violation, and I said, as far as I'm concerned, the intent of that is in the first three paragraphs of the, I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, it covers those three things, so. And once you get past number one, restriction on living units, two, number of bedrooms, and three, the use of the third floor, it just goes right into permitting and enforcement and so on. And that's where it gets pretty heavy into where twos and why fours, et cetera. I don't think we've ever had to do this before. This is the town working with the guy to allow him to go forward and minimize additional expense.
Well, the reason I asked, I wanted to open this up to the board for any questions that they may have before I signed it, just because I don't wanna have another deed issue in town, so.
With that said though, I'm, I'm pleased to see the cooperation, and that we, we as a town are trying to help this man be able to get the most for his money, and, you know, if he would've come to us in the first place, he probably would've been better off.
Far less painful.
So, but I appreciate everybody who's helped him and made this work. With years of being on the Board of Health, that was always what I had tried to do too. It's not always easy, so, Lincoln, thank you for, for doing this for the town and for the owner of the property.
Doing my job.
Right.
But it's not always easy.
No, and to be honest with you, a lot of people don't cooperate, and it's, it's, we really haven't turned a corner, this is still the place where work gets done on weekends and in the dark, so that people can avoid scrutiny and permitting and.
And there lies the, the minimum tax growth, or tax base growth, or whatever it was.
Yeah, new growth.
New growth, thank you.
Small, very small. Any other questions for Lincoln or on this document? I'll sign this in the next day or two and get it back.
Yeah, I have the one that's not.
Yeah, and I don't think we'll ever hear about it again, so.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
I do have one more.
Read.
Item that just popped up. Evelyn McNamara is resigning as permanent trustee of the library. She's moving out of town, so.
Oh, okay.
So the, so she's a wonderful lady, I got to meet her.
She is a special one.
She's terrific, so, anyway, I just thought I'd share that with you. That just came in today, handed it to me, handed it to me today. And what happens is the library trustees will make a recommendation for the board to appoint a permanent trustee, and separately make a recommendation to appoint somebody to fill the, permanent trustee who's actually likely to be moving from an elected position. And so you'll, then they'll recommend somebody to appoint for the, the balance of the term in the elected position, and that's the bylaws of the town, the process. So you'll probably see that soon.
Well, we thank Mrs. McNamara for all of her years of many service, services in many, many areas of the town of Millville.
Yeah. Did you have a question on that one?
No, I wanted to say the town owns her debt of gratitude, decades of service. Not just in the library, but she's been a stalwart for the Millville library for a long time.
Yeah.
A pillar of the community.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your service. So.
At one point, she was the principal of Longfellow School.
Really?
Oh, really?
I heard that.
Well, she was, I know she was a teacher there, I'm not, I, she wasn't principal when I was there, but.
That was before us, Jen, come on.
She was there when I was there, she had the little room. She, she, I think, I believe she was a specialist teacher. And she, you know, she was a great, a great lady.
That was a good try, though.
She was a great lady, yeah. But she made.
All right, anything else, Peter?
No, that's it, I'll.
That's it?
She just got some signatures to make.
All right, so, we gotta just sign two sets of meeting minutes, seven copies of the election warrant, and do we have a notary here now, or?
No.
Okay, I'll get this.
No.
I'll come down.
And there won't be one in the town hall till next week.
Okay, I can get it, I'll take it with me to work, I can get it done at work and bring it back.
Sue can do it too. I don't know if that's a conflict of anything.
We'll go to a bank, whatever.
I could just take that one that, Mr. Felix, is that his name?
Yes, yeah.
Sign, I'll take that, I have a notary at work, I can get it done tomorrow, and I can drop it back by.
Great.
So, okay. We have things that are minutes, I think I might've written on mine.
We're gonna make the changes, so you're really just signing in the back.
Oh, that's true. I'll start with mine then, and then I'll.
That was a lot accomplished in a small amount of time, nice job.
Well, we held off on a lot of notifications. We've been doing at the meeting, you know, the special town meeting.
Do we have seven of these, or do we?
Did I sign on your line?
Yeah.
I'll fix it next time.
Oh, next meeting's December. No, we have seven of those to do. So our next meeting is December second, Monday. Luckily, I brought a new pen.
Looking at calendars today, we're already over a third of the way through the school year.
Yes.
I don't know where the time's going.
Don't worry, we get those snow days, we'll go late.
Okay with none. No, that goes against your, but.
Goes against my.
Is that right?
Yeah. Oh, I love snow days. I don't mind making them up.
That's just number seven.
Oh, okay.
This is the twenty-first, I can do this one.
No, I don't think Tom could do that neither.
Did I sign it anywhere?
Did I announce from the, I'll announce it now, just in case I did not. The polls will be open from eight AM to eight PM on December fourth, which is a Wednesday, at St. Augustine's Church for the vote, for the MES boiler. Eight AM to eight PM. I don't remember saying that, so, I'll let Tom sign this one.
Okay.
Put your hands up. We just have to recycle it. The signature page. Oh, we're ten minutes late, it's eight twenty-five.
And they say eight thirty?
Were you aiming for eight fifteen?
No, we'll have our last two meetings, and the vote's eight fifteen, eight fifteen, that's our time. I didn't factor Jerry in tonight. Hey, listen, we, we need somebody in the audience to come up.
There was no cars when I pulled in, I said, oh, it's getting quiet and quick.
Anything else from anyone?
Yeah.
Something? This one right here. Okay, this is the redo right here, is that correct?
Nope, 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 that's this one.
Whichever one Tom's on.
You and Tom aren't on. You're on this one.
Okay. I think I signed that one.
Yep, I think so. Yep, we're on that one. This was just the three of us.
Gotcha.
So I have to, Tom signed.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.